You are watching Access to the Port County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the May 21st meeting of the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesses the port county dot org.
Good evening, everyone. If I could have everyone stand to join us in the closing of the meeting.
All right. I am for the citizens of L.A., the United States of America, and to the people of the citizens. One nation under God, with which the law will be ruled.
Thank you, everyone. Counsel, has everyone had a chance to review the votes from last month's meeting? And if so, were there any changes or corrections that anyone had for this as well?
I have no changes.
If there are no changes, comments, or questions, thank you, Lauren.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Moving on to approval of the fund report. Again, any comments or questions? Crystal, would anything stick out to you in the fund report? This amount that we have in the in-depth grant, or $5,950?
Sorry, can't be able to see it.
Oh, can you hand me the card for sure? I would call it the in-depth grant. It was right at the top of the second page. Is that going down? It didn't want, or... Can you take a look at that for us? Make sure we know what that is.
I'm going to need you to hand it over to me.
It's the top line of Page 2.
Oh, we do. Sorry. Thank you. You just saw it all the way to the bottom.
I don't know what that's for, or anything. There's some revenue that's been allocated there, but I'm not sure that that's in the right line. I don't think that might have to be placed in another area. But if you'll take a look at that, let Crystal let us know what's left. Does anyone have any other comments or questions for anything? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve.
Move to approve the fund report.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none of those, motion carries. Moving on to payment of the bills, please. I didn't see anything that stood out to me, but the board council has seen a new set of them. Hearing none of questions, concerns, or comments? Do we have a motion to approve payment of the bills?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Chris. In a second.
So you're...
Thank you, Lauren. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on. Did you have any correspondence this month?
Uh, this month?
We're going to change some things around just a little bit because we do have a guest here from Swanson Center, so if we can ask Nikki Huffer to come up to the microphone. You'll have to press the button that's on the mic in front of you, and then we'll for your request.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening. Everybody here?
Yes.
My name is Nikki. I am a member of managing the Swanson Center. And I have been working with the foundation to co-chair our very first 5K as a fundraiser for the Swanson Center. And I am here tonight to formulate a question of the goal to hold that 5K in the Town of Trail Creek on Saturday, September 14th, where we're calling this the Run For Hope. It is the inaugural event that will be themed and I'll be there for you. Our goal is to raise suicide awareness in the Port County. This has been our first year, so we're not very certain as to the number of participants to expect. And however we do, in order for various departments to the town to control parking, maintain the traffic road properly addressed, any other possible issues that may arise during both during the event and during the planning of the event during the day, et cetera. Swanson Center has been a community and health center in Port County for more than 50 years, and now such as being provided complete mental and about behavioral services to those who live in Port County. It's our hope that through this event, we'll be able to help the families around suicide, stop the stigma, and raise awareness that there is hope for those struggling with various mental health concerns. So we're hoping to get a move made today, and if you want to say anything, you're welcome. Do you have any questions?
I will, in full disclosure, recuse myself from the vote because I do work at Swanson Center for the foundation, so I don't have to sit with someone with the vote. But does anyone have any questions or comments for Nikki?
September is suicide prevention, so that was the goal we did in September.
Marshall, do you have any questions or concerns back there?
I agree that is.
So if anyone has any comments or questions, can they have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the request for the Swanson Center to have their annual suicide awareness 5K on September 14th, 2024.
Thank you, Pete, and thank you, Lauren. All in favor?
Aye.
And again, I'm not voting, so thank you, Ms. Allen, for being here. Okay, moving back, we had no correspondence, correct? Moving on to MS4, did you have anything that you've heard from anyone, Chris? And I have none either. And so we'll move on to the attorney's report.
I don't know if it's...
No updates, nothing on the property, so we're on...
I did, of course. I had a conversation this morning, and I know, of course, always anticipated it might be a question. One, there's progress on cleaning it up, is my understanding. The other, there is an issue with the transfer of the property with the back taxes that a lot won't cover the deed, and so they are in the litigation process to try to clear out the discrepancy.
Okay, and these are the two properties, just to clarify, that we've been watching for some time?
Yep, I'm happy. So there is progress, same return, and he is committed to it. So if you have any questions, or you want me to pass along or find anything out, I'll probably go with him, because he's definitely responsible.
And which address is that one for? Is it for 235 or for 110?
Whichever one has the boundary dispute.
That's, I believe, 110?
I believe that's mine as well.
Okay, okay, thank you. Moving on to our engineer.
No report, please.
Okay, thank you. I don't see our park board president here, but Laura, did you have anything for the park board?
Here's the thing. I thought Amanda was going to be here at the festival.
Can I interrupt you for a minute? Turn to my phone, please.
There she goes. Lee.
There you go.
The festival is next month, and... Is this her?
This is Amanda.
That's her.
She's walking through the door.
So we'll hold off for just one minute.
You're up.
Hi, you're up.
Yes.
I don't see our building inspector, so they'll delay for just a moment. There we go.
All right, well, I'll use a stencil for you guys. Thank you. We got a couple of beds, some mattresses. Okay, so we've gone, we've done pretty much our last meeting, we pretty much solely focused on the centennial celebration, so what you have in front of you is not the list of everything. Some of the things changed as far as the last listing you, as far as the beer tent, things like that, that is all out of the window. What we've done instead is we were able to work out some things with Moose Lodge, their opponents, and they're happy to host us for an inaugural theme, but it's $250, $50 of that is refundable deposit, but what we're looking at is some sort of like that, that will be for the adult after-party, so from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then everything else, like the Cali kids activities, things like that will be held and also part from 12 to 5:00. So we did receive some sponsors, so wait until you see here is the total amount of expenses. There is that $54.6950, which you'll see on the sponsors. We have five of those who bought a package for $500. So $500, if my math works out, and so that leaves a balance of $29.6950 that is outstanding. That is to be paid, but we've been working on this for a while. I think we have a lot of things pretty much worked up, but as you'll see, going down by the status. The thing I believe that we discussed the last meeting, we moved forward in the process towards the bill for graphic arts, which I should have the signage here at the end of this week, so you guys will slowly start seeing that out, along with, you know, street signs, things like that. And then, but the shirts, the ones that the foodies were ordered, so we are good there. And then just the fancy house, the bands, things like that are the last items that need that. We're asking for it before, if possible. So still Saturday, June 22nd, 12:00, well, 12 to 5:00 in Elsa Park, and then the after-party would be at Moose Lodge. So usually, I guess with the Moose, they only allow, they don't usually allow outside members, so this is kind of a big deal for us, that we're able to do this. We're hoping, we're not really going to mess with food, but in our sponsorship package, we did offer a VIP for the, some of the sponsors, and so they would, that is where you'll see the VIP tab there, that would be just for their first week, offer like the first couple of drinks of our, our own odd tab of ours, just because, you know, we used to be sponsored, so that is where we're at. But the ramp should be delivered tomorrow, or at least next week.
And we've paid for that ramp, all right, correct?
We have paid for the ramp, the ramp, yes, and the date from the Street Department, well, it should be installing it. He said we'll be there at 7:00, and the ramp should be delivered beginning of April 30 from Playworks.
What exactly are we getting with the Moose Hall rental?
Um, we get the entire outside and the entire inside, and then they clean up, and they provide volunteers. So I know volunteers is kind of a big, was a big spot, but I know, like I said, 200 of that is actually what we're paying, $450 is just a deposit to lay down, but they're providing the cat, they're providing the bar, so pretty much we just have to let them know what anything we need ordered. Kind of work from there, so it's just something kind of, just since it's 12 to 5:00, we just want something for the adults to do, and with everything going on in Elsa Park, between lights, things like that, you know, like the hours, the bands, the noise, appearances, things like that, we just thought that might be an easier option because the band can play there, all the sound is there, electricity is there, there's restrooms there, and then we can talk about possibly just doing some sort of like registration that we post, so we can kind of keep a track of how many people are coming, and then that kind of just keeps, kind of a even plow around the parking lot because we were kind of worried the parking situation, but they got a good amount of parking situation with it only being from 4:00 to 8:00. He doesn't stand a moment, the president doesn't seem to think it will be an issue.
Okay.
So how are you looking at parking at the park?
Well, we, I, that is a very good question. We have not figured that out yet, solely because we can tell the folks to try to stay off, you know, the state of those driveways. I don't really know where to have overflow parking. I mean, it's unfortunately, Elsa Park can only fit so much. I mean, I don't know if they'll, I don't know if we should call the church, maybe they're, I'm not sure, actually, if I'd like, just to see if we can use some overflow parking there. Now I'm thinking about it, but I don't, I mean, we're going to post something on Facebook. I don't know where to tell people, really.
Well, it's not, but it'll say concern. I've lived at the house where, right here, I've seen where it's about under control, and I've seen where the direction is. And it's primarily because people don't know, you know, they all apply, and some don't know how to park, and there's always so many that can park around the perimeter, but once that gets full, then that's it. And when, no, then they start parking all over the place, you know? Really all over the place, and then it becomes a mess.
Well, I go for the vendors.
Well, we have your parking signs up. Yeah, around, I would do for days, all season, they're kind of parked. But I also think that it would be worth spending money making some larger signs that say overflow parking, and then talk to the two churches and ask, it's not that far out along, and you know that Pastor Ruth is going along with St. Boots, and I'll see if I can give you a replacement for her. I don't know what your floor plan is called, floor plan is, where all your vendors will be stationed, but I'm just saying, and I'm just, I don't know if you can get it all apart, or if you're going to be focused on the park, but if, I'm just saying, maybe there could be, if there's a floor plan is, if you can dedicate a section for parking on the park, but I'm just saying. The other part.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We didn't hear any issues with the fall festival, but we did allow the vendors to park behind us in that far part of the softball field, so that eliminated all the spots up front. But we'll probably do very, something very similar because at this point, we only have like 15 craft vendors compared to the 26 that we have at the fall festival. So we'll have any room for the vendors and for the volunteers to be able to park in that back parking lot, but I will talk to the church, and we will make sure that we are as thorough as possible as far as Facebook and what, and any, I guess, literature that we put out as far as the parking situation. I'm hoping that everybody will be kind of curious. I feel like the fall festival, we didn't have any issues, but if Steve Dick wants to help only towards the cost of those of our signs, we would. But yeah, so we can definitely get some signage made, and I'm happy to put that out there. I don't understand the people that live around there, can, I mean, I already saw some posts about people, someone who was irritated about that, but I don't, other than St. Boots, I'm not sure.
So I would suggest reaching out to St. Boots, so let's get, let's get that in place, so we can see if we can do overflow, and then we'll find out, if you can find out how much the signage would be for additional signage for that. That would be great. At this time, we're looking for an approval on their, their budget expenditure of $2,969.50 to hold the fall festival.
So if their fall, their festival, they put down, it's a $2,000 of what they have? So I'm not towards the $19,400 we brought it through.
So we'll have to find that additional funding for that $969.50.
Yes, if you were ready to use that $19,400, you're on there to thousand, and we'll, yes.
I, well, I'm confident we can find it somewhere.
We have tried to get sponsors, we've tried to, if things don't mean as much as past, or, let's say, I don't open them down, pretty much talk to resources as far as sponsors, things like that, I think, just because at this point, we can't add G to a whole lot of our, I think, no, we can't add T-shirts, we have to signage, we have to reback, go back to our projects. So I think we're done with the kind of fundraising for now, but I think that this is, this is pretty much the final as far as we've talked about for all expenses. The only additional expense I can see, we talked about the smaller veterans avenues, just because we don't want to interfere with their kitchen, family that don't really have a big food operation there, so we talked about maybe for the VIPs ordering pizzas or something like that, but I don't have a cost for that, and we're still trying to see if Foxy Boy could provide anything as far as a food truck, everything at the Moose, kind of in the parking lot or something, just to provide additional refreshments for people, because, you know, you're drinking, and you know, it's always good to have some food, so. We are still, that is probably the only thing that is up in the air. Everything else has been locked and booked, and we have batteries, just kind of hold on until we have the goal.
Okay. So, counsel, we're looking to approve their budget. Do we have a motion?
What motion?
To approve the budget as presented?
Yep.
Thank you, Lauren. In a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Pete. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries, and you have your budget.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Our current budget, you are in that, in that park, just at Moose.
Yeah, we have the Moose, and there will be a back performer at the park. And the Angelo.
The electrical issues, which happened.
We will be speaking to about half a year later, and honestly, so. All right, and then, I don't know, I don't think it's discussed at the last meeting, also, a new member.
And she's on the agenda for later meetings.
Okay, that was all I got. Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you. Then again, our building inspector is not here. Do we have any reports for planning and zoning?
No.
That brings up our police department.
I'm going to be quick, though. Maybe I've got to update you on this.
Sure, Mike.
Hello. The only thing I've got to update you on is our radar signs. You know, we got four more. Last Friday, all four of them installed. There's one that's worth about 50, coming off of 20. There's just, it's just part of the apartments there. There's one on Rowland's for eastbound traffic just after whiskey, so people coming down, obviously, off of, from, and then all the apartments down, they're coming, the truck, we got all that. We'll address that. And there are two on River Will, one for eastbound, one for westbound by the parks. One is in Warren Jar, the other is really at the end of Avondale. That would be, one in Avondale is for eastbound, and one in Warren Jar is for westbound. They're not set yet. We can ask a day or two as far as, you know, whether the flash will drop, but they are recording, they are flashing back the speeds to people, so. The Street Department did an amazing job. They're tuned in, great, they, some pretty good distance on them, so they pick up quite a ways back, and very beneficial. So the goal is to get some of them on next year.
Okay.
That's all I got.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, well, as always, thank you.
As you're watching people by the, it's being effective.
I agree. I drive through all the time in my, in my own vehicle, and it's rewarding to see people finding the right flash, and then you hit red lights, and then they stop, and it happens a lot. Come through town a lot. If I have to go downtown, I swing through town. If I have to go down to the mall there, or the south end, I swing through town, just, just to see.
As playground, 15 is pretty tough. It's, it's, I have to slow down on my bicycle.
Yes, yeah, we've already got that one on camera, so we're addressing that. But as always, we appreciate you guys' support. Reach out there, David.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, our Street Department commissioner was not able to be here tonight, but I do have his report from spring cleanup. So they did four loads of leaves, you have the leaf machine, two loads using the loose and bagged dump trailer, and then seven loads of sticks, limbs, and branches. As a reminder, the town does not pick up appliances, furniture, tires, household debris, et cetera. For those items, you need to call Borden for special pickups, or use the large dumpster provided to residents located in the gated area just to the side of the Street Department area. The yard waste toders, I have a crystal, Crystal and I both spoke with Eric from Borden, and they are advising that people call them directly at Borden. If they need the number, they can call the town hall, or it's on the side of your refuse container that should be in front of your home. As another reminder, the yard waste toders should be out on Friday for pickup throughout the year. Yard waste containers can include grass clippings, leaves cannot be included in there, but grass clippings, yard and garden debris, small broken down sticks, limbs, and branches, small logs, and biodegradable sacks or paper bags. Please do not, again, put leaves in there, because they don't break down the same, and they don't want that in the, in the same container. Mr. Baker is suggesting that we develop and send out some kind of an informational flyer to the residents regarding spring cleanup, yard waste tods, and fall leaf collection dates if we can, so we'll work on that in the coming months. Other than that, we're still working on the tennis courts with the park department, the park board. The solar radar signs, as Steve mentioned, have been installed, and the welcome signs, as people have noted, have been installed. Five of the seven. We're waiting for a decision on the location of the other two that we have, and as it may be, we need to order one more because there was one more entrance to the town that we were talking about making sure was marked. So we have at least two now to install, and we'll see if we need one or two more. So just note that that may be forthcoming. Does anyone have any other questions for the Street Department? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. Anything from NERCy this month?
Well, NERCy was very interesting.
Could you please make sure you speak into that?
I came in at the right time. They had a meeting. And over, they have NERCy's center that's across from the Expro building, and very, very good meeting, and I'll just hit some highlights here. One, the commissioners were on board, and those, we meet four times a year. They have an executive board that needs once a month, and they do ask if we can attend, and we can, those. Past, it's past meeting dealt with, oh, they had a, the record was there to talk about how many crosses they had in Indiana, and what they're working with on quiet zones, and they said their railroad in Indiana, 197 years old in Indiana. And there's 19,000 miles of track in Indiana. So other than that, they really, they did have different subjects, but again, it is very, it's just nothing directly effective for Trail Creek.
Okay. Anything further for your report?
No, no, NERCy.
Okay. Thank you, Laura. So I know you're next on the agenda with the update on the town hall as well.
Yeah. Up on the screen, I hope, isn't this great? I have some, I have some pictures, I hope. One of the problems we ran into, first of all, the renovation is going fine. We're on schedule. We have, this week, I think we have grid, that's starting up, Palmer. Grid, grid meaning is the ceiling grid for the rough ceiling. Blowing insulation will start, I'm going to say siding that's going on, that's on the north wall and the south wall. That's a little bit today and tomorrow. And then the painting is already, the drywall's up, and the painting is taking place. We've got primer going on right now, and they're starting to work on the final color, but that's just going to start. So on schedule, they're doing well. We ran into a problem now that's on the backside of our side of the building, and it has to do with this area, and to be more specific, sorry, I will, there. The, this area, this area here was where the air conditioner compressor was. This was awesome. That was a brick wall that held back, the virginian wall that held back the soil that was against that. And so we changed that, of course, because we noticed a lot build off of that, but the problem is that, that, boy, I'm trying to think, that, and this area is in front, and over here, that, where that soil is, it's actually right at that height of land, and it does play, it's playing against the building. As it rains, and our concern was, and this area right here is elevated. Out here by the street is the lowest points, so when it rains, we are concerned of the water going the wrong way, going that way, and we don't want that. So what we did, Steve, and this is my safety, Steve and I, we talked about it, and we did this, Steve did this. This is on the north wall. This is a lark, Steve, no, she answered. This is a lark roofing material. We also put it on the south side where the old garage were under the windows. That because this sign, this whole wall, siding comes all the way down. And before, and just above that, it affects me, out there, that's why with, it's not created. So we, and over here is the soil, and with the rainwater and rain inspection with the ones we've had recently, it's actually, there was actually, you see a run. there was actually still run that comes down there and comes in front of those streets. So, sorry, it's a long story, but we, we took care of that problem. There was a conversation I had with everybody, text, email, earlier this month, and it was like relating to $4,500.
Right, and they can't approve that?
That was, that we're not, that was going to, what we're going to do is cut this wall, shore it up, and continue to block all the way around and put it in the face, or we weren't too happy to do this instead, which is, we feel very comfortable with that. The problem is still, it is, and it's not really related to holiday. It's just way that it gives this elevation out front of this area. It's higher, we need to knock it down so that water comes away. And the problem, well, we're, Steve and I, sorry, Steve and I are planning, and I've already had good ideas, that they have placed landscaping out there, cross my knees around, but we're, eventually, we'll end up having to put, say, stone here, maybe two or three feet off of that, instead of the overhang, and.
Long Island?
Yeah. I thought I went. You see, the overhang, where is the, um, I don't have any more, anyway, the overhang of utility room will be in front. So that'll affect that, we had a stone front there. We do not, we do not have a clear solution on what to do with this soil yet. One of the major problems is the utilities. Our utilities come from infinite light bulb between two buildings, the firehouse building and the, and the town hall. But then it comes straight to where the generator's at. And then that stops, as far as, then it's private after that. And there it splits and goes to Steve's place, goes to the town hall. We, what we call pothole, find, follows the lead where the gas, where the electric is coming from, that generator station. And it's only, it's very shallow, it's only 18 inches down. So we, and what I call pothole, that's taking this dig by your hand to find it, find those lines, and that's how we determine the depth. So all this being said, we're working on, sorry, we're working on trying to open a solution on that, economical solution.
Can I meet you out there someday?
Oh, yeah, you bet.
Okay.
Yep. Anytime.
Okay. Do you have some ideas?
I have some, I've got some ideas.
We can, you go on. So, and so now here comes the rest of the story. We had change orders, many. One of them, I was a little dischanted with a contractor because they didn't let me know. But I know what happened, I know what needed to be happened, because it's tied into the pump, well, only had a move. The first quote, well, the price that was turned in last month was only, only Bluefield, which is the plumbing company. And they did not, Holiday did not say anything to me about the cost for circulate electric that run the electric along with that work. So that, you see there, the breakdown is right here of circulate electric, so that amount. It ends up to $2,381. So that we need to.
This is where it's approved.
Okay.
That's, that's what we appropriate, or that's what?
That's what we're approving.
Oh, that's what we're approving.
So it's a difference of $2,330.19.
Is that just for, is that just for the electric, or is that for the moving?
Yes, no, it's quicker.
And so the moving of the?
Was plumbing.
Right. So it's?
Twenty-five.
Thirty-five oh three fifty for the plumbing, and then twenty-three thirty for the electric.
Sounds, yeah, like, yeah.
So the new total is?
Their total is on your, on that change order.
Got it.
The complete change order. Some area, they mentioned that they, I thought we signed the first one last month and got it along, but they haven't received it, so.
So this is actually an additional twenty-three thirty on top of this, too.
Is that correct? So they want eight, three sixty-six?
I see twenty-three thirty here.
Yes, okay. Has both in there?
Three oh five.
The one more, if you're looking at it, the one more says, oh, Pete, four, sorry, four, four.
Restock.
That's on there, too. And there's a change of $975 on that.
Okay.
Ethan, was there error for ordering a long color?
I, all I can say is that we, it was sent as PON, FON, and that was PON, whatever it was. I never saw PON, but anyway, that's how that came about. And Crystal saw it, and that's not the color you'd like, and.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't understand if we had, this, this total doesn't make any sense if we're doing the twenty-three thirty and the thirty-three oh five, that doesn't, that doesn't add up to.
I think the thirty, thirty-three oh five is the subtotal, this change.
Oh, got it, got it, got it, got it, okay.
And that's the thirty.
Understand, okay.
So they have a six percent fee that they owe on. Okay, so our total in terms of change number that we're looking to approve this evening for their new contract?
Seventy-five oh three.
So three six six seventy-one point zero six.
Great. Now, to soften the blow, which I don't have clear information on yet, but anybody remembers, we were planning on installing a bill of order in front that, that we're, well, they were not trying to get that information from wireflaps. They've had some delayed issues, but anyway, we're waiting for that information to come Other than that, we are doing.
Do we anticipate any more change orders? Hopefully not.
I don't think so. No, the only thing that's going to be separate, that's ours, is the landscaping in that part. That's not, that's not how it works. And Steve and I are working on these triangles, and people are trying to make again this economical decision on that.
If you would, make sure that you include the street department on that?
Always there.
And then make sure that you're being careful with the stormwater runoff from that building.
Yeah.
And I was also going to ask, refresh my memory, what was our original budget for this?
Do you have any original?
Was three sixty.
No, no, our budget, what we had actually budgeted for, not what it's costing, what we had originally budgeted.
Four, or sixty, or fifty?
Okay, so we are still?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I just don't like the.
Yeah, I just wanted, I thought, I wanted to refresh my memory on that, but I thought we were pretty much under, under budget, so I just wanted to.
Right.
That's right. Got it, sixteen.
The one thing keeping the radar is the, when the time comes and we're getting more comfortable with the finalized number, is the audio video.
Right.
So that's why we're, you know, holding back and saying, scratching, all that stuff.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Anything further?
None.
Okay. Questions or comments, anyone? No? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the new contract, including the change order of $3,503.50 for the total of $366,781.06.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Pete. And second? We have a co-second with Laura and Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing opposed, motion carries. And that is the town hall.
I can just, I'm going to put on that. Where the well, our well is white, but it's.
Can you mic, so we can hear?
These are wells, looking into, that well, you're reaching to the building.
What are you talking about, for the police department, or?
The town hall building. I don't remember the last time that that well was.
A well shouldn't have to be re-drilled, as far as I know. I think the only thing that can happen with a well is potential of the pump or the tank going bad.
But they had.
Right, and, right, and having the wellhead cleaned, so, I mean, unless we're having water pressure issues.
I just want to throw that out there.
Right, no, I understand.
Consider it, give us a look into cost of the, for who, I don't know.
Right. Yeah, it would just be a pump in that end cleaning though the tip.
Okay.
Yeah.
That option is still up there.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, we have the approval of a new park board number, Katie Stohkow. So Katie, if I can have you approach the mic and introduce yourself. Let us know a little bit about who you are and why you're interested in the park board.
Sure. Hello.
Hello.
Katie, so, yes.
Yes, we are. I was like, hold on a second, Hannah, yes.
Wouldn't you forget that about us like fourteen years ago? Passionate of the community, we did have a place, bringing people together, and I think parks are very campus for that. So good ideas to bring to the table, so, yeah.
Does anyone have questions for Katie? And look.
When are we expecting?
June 27th is the evaluation.
So right before.
Yes.
Right, at the same time, okay. So if anyone would like to make the motion to approve Katie for the park board opening.
Should I abstain?
Should I abstain?
No, I need.
My board?
Yeah.
You don't have to, because you're the park board president.
I have to.
You do not have to.
I do not have to. Well, then I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll say.
Thank you. Thank you. Laura and then Chris with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Katie? Thank you for volunteering to join the park board. Katie.
Welcome aboard.
We've already handled the five K request. Now we have a resolution for the town of Trail Creek to authorize a change fund for the clerk treasurer's office. Chris, have you had a chance to review these?
I have, I've reviewed them, I have interviewed the clerk, and that's of course, a matter of trust, but so, one of those things that ain't cleaning up, and you're trying to improve systems that determine the necessity, and you haven't found it formally in the past, so I'd rather have asked that presented to you, and that policy established, and be revoked when you already determined that.
And has everyone had a chance to review the resolution? Any questions or comments regarding this? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve resolution three dash 2024 to authorize cash change funds in the clerk treasurer's office.
I move to approve resolution three dash 2024.
Thank you. And a second?
My answer.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. And the next one is an ordinance, two dash twenty-four, ordinance from town of Trail Creek authorizing additional appropriations in the lit dash public safety fund for the 2024 budget. This was for the repair and maintenance of one of our vehicles that had to have the engine replaced. And the total amount requested is $11,000. So we can have a motion to approve that as well.
Same process here, same, and you know, where you need to be in terms of recommendations between clerk's office, however, this can't prove it today, or you have.
First reading.
So there will be first reading, that'll be in the public hearing, which the publications are already submitted. At the next hearing, so that those in the audience, the public can speak for it, and you can do a primitive file for it next meeting.
Thank you. So do we, you still need to do a motion?
First reading, yeah.
Okay, so for the first reading, and you still want us to do the motion as a, okay?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Pete. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries as well. Moving on to the new website. Laura, I believe that's, that's you.
That's me. That's me. So several people have said we need a new website, so I've been researching it, and I'm not complete yet, but I have called Long Beach, and I've had a meeting with Mutabit, Fox Media, who currently have, I've tried to contact them four times, and gotten no response from them at all. The town of Pines, I'm not really interested in, because when we go to it, it'll be warning that the site's not secure, so I'm not even going to investigate that. I haven't got a holding machine in the shores. In Pop Park, I've talked to Susan Tuchel, and she was very helpful, and they created themselves on Squarespace, so we need some more investigation, but what I wanted to throw out here tonight, what ideas do you guys want on the website? The one thing I found that I really like about Mutabit, other than the price, is that it allows, it will allow Crystal to, if people sign up for texts or emails, she can send out a word to them. Say the garbage truck doesn't run, she can send out in a word.
And I think that's something our residents have been requesting.
Yes, they've been requesting that, and no better than putting it on Facebook.
So I think that one of the things we need to do, rather than just having the council decide on this, is maybe poll our community, if we can, so if we can create some kind of a survey that we can send out.
Okay.
Even if we put it just out on social media, people can, can request, or will take, take part in that survey.
Okay.
I mentioned out to some people, too, because I know there are similar organizations that I'm part of that we use.
Pardon?
There's, I'm sorry, I'm reaching out to some people also.
Okay.
There's, there's some organizations that I'm a part of that we use, different vendors for websites, and I know the way it's set up right now, it's basically, it's just a webpage that you go to, update it, and then it updates your webpage, so that's, I'm going to check and find out.
The other thing that Steve pointed me at, and I got approval from the state today, at the time that we go live with this, we will change our website address. Our URL will be townoftrailcreek.in.gov. So that gives us an average level of protection, and it's free. We won't pay for it every year to get the site. So, but are there any other towns that you guys know that I can contact that, that you go to?
I think you've got a pretty good start.
Yeah.
With the several that you've spoken with.
The Pines, they use one called Wembley? Wait. And it's, it's, I looked it up, it's intended for business, it's, well, we're not a business. Whereas Long Beach uses one called Civic Plus. It's really neat, but it's way out of our price range. I mean, it's way, I, I do need to call on, because when I talked to Meg Collins about it, it starts at like $10,000, and it's too much.
Have you spoken with the Port County or Michigan City, see who they use?
Well, Michigan City, I haven't talked to them, but the guy from Mutabit said, we should talk to smaller towns.
Sure, agree.
He says, that is where you get the most bang for your buck. That's why I went to all the small towns. But Mutabit, it's their government, the thing I like about, and you know I have a computer background, is they're ADA compliant, so right away, everything you enter, if a blind person goes to your website, it talks to them with what you've entered in.
Okay.
And, and it's, it's fairly cheap, and it's pretty easy to use.
So what would the pricing be if they gave you some kind of a?
What they gave me a price. They gave me a price, I don't know what it was.
Your seatbelt, not mine.
No. The price would be $114 a month for our size of town. 1368 annually, no contract. As long as you pay annually, it remains $114 a month. And there's no startup fee, which is what Long Beach is really gets you, is that a large part of theirs is in the startup fee. Which, and this, this company will port the current website over from one and all the information, so.
And which one was that again?
That's Unibit.
Unibit?
Probably, I, Crystal gets emails from them, I do, just they're begging for, you know, help. But the guy walked me through a demo, and it was pretty interesting, so. But I'm looking for ideas.
I think that's great for a host, but then who do we have design the site and maintain the page?
Us.
Yeah, we would maintain.
We would do it ourselves.
Yes.
Would they have a program inside of that, maintained inside of that?
It's really cool, they had to walk me through it.
Okay.
I mean, it's very much like that, I guess, so.
Okay.
And very easy to teach Crystal, very easy.
Okay.
But I like the idea of a survey of what people want.
Yeah, I think we'll need to, does anyone else have any suggestions on that?
I think we should go wire this company and maybe walk us through it all together.
Okay.
I'll see. The only issue would be that they reduce Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday during the day is the only time they do demos.
And I think whoever is available, maybe then.
Okay.
If you do it virtually, that would be easier.
Do we have the whole meeting to all of you just that demo? Or can we just all just say it's live and schedule it, and you jump on if you want to not, just to watch the demo?
I'm gonna defer back to our attorney.
You probably gonna wanna just set it up as a workshop and advertise it.
Okay.
Okay, and then the survey, we don't need to do anything formal, okay. I think Laura, if you and I want to work together on that, we can get that out pretty quickly.
Okay.
Okay, anything more on the website?
Nope, this is it.
Moving on to public comment, we have any public comment this evening? If you'll approach the microphone and tell us your name and address, that would be fantastic. I mean, if you really want it, which is.
Okay, I'm at 604 Black Oak Drive. Okay, and I got two items. All right, right before I came here, I was approached by a sales guy, okay? And he wanted to roof my roof. All right, and I think, hmm, is this a scam? Because, you know, the hail damage to my roof and all that, okay? So this guy was from Rapid Roof. I've never heard of Rapid Roof before. And he's supposed to cover in the water, so this is something that's an issue in Trail Creek. And the other was Boulder, a color I am aware of. They did actually do my roof about seven years ago. So that's one thing I didn't want to bring up. It's apparently real big around my area, Black Oak, even here. This, by the way, is Frank Razz, he's our neighborhood precinct committee man, also from Trail Creek too. And he's $622. Okay. So anyway, just wanna bring it up about the roof stuff. So I don't know if you had any complaints on that yet.
Have you had any calls in the office about that?
For the roofing, yes, but we sent somebody out to go tell them they weren't allowed to solicit.
Okay, that was gonna be my suggestion.
But it was not Rapid Roof, it was a different roofing company, Officer Selfman.
I'm gonna go before.
So really, the only thing we can do on that is have you call down to the office, maybe call the non-emergency line to the police department? And they can go out and check on it?
Actually, Officer Selfman was out with Rapid while I was on my way here. To let them know that. Yeah, so he was out with Rapid and letting them know that he thinks they can solicit, and that if they are doing any work, they have to come register.
So they're not contract registered for Trail Creek?
No.
They're not registered at this time?
Boulder is.
No, they may be registered, but they still.
They still can't, just go over to their own solicit.
Oh, they're right, yes, so what happens when he comes tomorrow at 2:00 at my house?
Well, he can still.
Probably a non-emergency number.
And their non-emergency number? Marshall, their non-emergency number again is?
219.
219?
Yeah. I just want to clarify, if you've invited them back, that changes the game a lot.
Right.
It's no longer calling it that solicitation.
Only talking about that time.
Well, again, but I just, the new line's there, if you're calling the police on somebody invited back, it's a different story.
I was gonna point that out as well, so thank you for clarifying, but the non-emergency number for the others?
That's the only number on the dial that I want to share off. All right, that's item number one.
Okay.
I'm number two, I'm really here on behalf of my neighbor. He lives a floor a half the year, and then he comes, and he just came back today. He just drove straight from Florida back.
And his name?
He's about my age.
His name?
This is.
Mike.
Mike, Mike Emig. I spelled his last name, E.M.I.G.H.
Emig?
And he's at 601 Black Oak, so he's right across the street.
Okay.
Okay, he came here before he was, I think either in September or August, somewhere around that area. And he has a, what we would call a golf cart.
Correct.
And he wanted to use that. We might have to talk about it probably. And I guess he got pulled over, and he was given something wrong or something. So that's why he came here.
Right.
Well, for one thing, it's not technically a golf cart. Okay, it looks like one, I would call it a golf, it's got steering wheel, and it's got lights, it's got a triangle, it's got turn signals, it's got horn. Those are not normally on a golf.
Is it a plated vehicle? Does it have a license plate?
I, I don't think it does, but.
If it's a town that has a street route, has that license plate, of course it's not.
Okay, well, it's called an NEV, and that stands for neighborhood electric vehicles.
Okay.
Okay, and it stands for, if they allow these in front of Indian Park, and they allow these here in Long Beach, why can't we add one in Trail Creek? So that's, you know, I'm the messenger, he'll kill me here, right? So that's what he brought up.
Okay.
Way back when.
We've had this conversation.
We have had this conversation, and the decision that the council made. So we have different streets that are a little bit busier than some of them that are obviously in Pop Park.
Right.
And several that are here in Long Beach as well. If we have someone in one of these NEVs or golf carts going down Johnson, Cool Spring, Risky, parts of Black Oak, Wellnuts, it poses a little bit of a danger to the people who are driving.
As a suggestion, okay, and I'm kind of new to this whole thing. If you only allow them on streets 25 miles an hour or lower, that would eliminate Johnson.
We had considered that.
Okay.
However, how do you police that 24/7?
Well, okay.
Because at some point, somebody's willing to have to travel on one of those other throughways to get to where they need to be.
Right, but there's others. I witnessed this myself this week. There's a guy in our neighborhood, he drives a John Deere.
Yeah, I've seen him, yeah, I've seen him go get gas at the.
Yeah.
No, he goes to memos.
Oh, I've seen him, he has a Johnson and Cool spring, yeah, Johnson and Cool spring, and his tractor lawnmower, so yes.
And he does it just instead of walking?
Well, and I guess the real issue is Trail Creek doesn't have sidewalks.
Correct.
So it forces people to use the street as a sidewalk. Either walking or bicycle riding.
And again, I'll remind you that Long Beach does not have sidewalks, nor does Potlochy Park.
Right, right. But they allow these.
And there are several neighborhoods within Michigan City that also do not have.
Okay. So it looks, so the issue is if you have a license plate, that will be okay, yeah, if the street lane has to be respected, that's inspection.
But that is the ultimate issue though, is we have streets that go through our town that are 35 miles an hour, 30 miles an hour. And as Mrs. Heath has pointed out, at some point, you're gonna have to use one of those streets in order to get to wherever it is you're going at some point. And that vehicle's not gonna go 30 miles an hour. So now you're becoming a hazard to yourself and other people who are on the road. And that's why we ultimately decided not to allow the golf cart or the neighborhood electric vehicles in Trail Creek. That was the ultimate decision that we made.
Okay.
So it's not that we don't understand and appreciate his stance, it's just that we have to watch out for the entire town, and the entire town.
Every case, they're, he has two dogs, they're big dogs.
Right, and they go to the park, if I remember correctly.
Right, and he has to open into his parent's truck, and he's driving five blocks.
Right.
Then he has to, you know, and it's so much easier if he has something like this.
I completely understand.
But I understand if you, you have to paint everybody with the same brush.
Correct.
So I understand that too. All right, I don't know, he's gonna be happy.
I can't make everyone happy all the time. I wish I could, but it's unfortunate, life is a hazard in general. Any other public comments this evening? Nobody, okay. Any comments from the clerk's office?
Good.
Thank you. Any comments from the council?
I have. There's two areas.
Please turn your mic on.
Need my mic? There's two areas that I did not include with Crystal, they're probably in business second, but. Some of us remember last month, there was a resident that was here that lived, lives at the intersection of Yankee and Waltons. And she, at a time, a week or two before that, a car literally ran into the inside of the house. So I was, I believe I either was volunteered or.
You volunteered yourself.
But, so I did, I went and looked, when I get involved, I do kind of a thorough research. And I looked at ASDM standards for vehicle impact. Cause I'm looking at the point of not just slowing a car down from running into the house, but to stop. There are several avenues. We had discussed, there was a discussion about guardrails. Now, here's a guardrail, this is right across the street. Guardrails, as my research shows, that are designed for glancing clothes. I'll call this, the guardrail are doing this, not a direct impact. There are what they call bollards. Bollards are, what you guys, everybody sees them, they're vertical pipes of various diameters filled with concrete. The key is what they're anchored to, how deep they are, and how much concrete is holding those in place to prevent a car from going into. We're talking about, you know, a car, truck, was, what, two, three tons of vehicle traveling 20, 30, 40 miles an hour. Again, kind of reading this ASDM standards. That would direct impact. This car that came down Yankee, I don't know if it was parked at, but it, you know, obviously would have made a direct impact. I researched bollards, they, I talked to engineers about it, and to put like four or five of them out there, you were taking, but their price range went from 1,500 to 2,000 per boulder. Just because it's all concrete, we related a lot of concrete. I had a utility company come out, also looked at identifiers, and they located the gas line and utilities, which just related that ones along the road. I went further, and I found a quarry, and I don't know if I, I think I sent this out to you guys, but. There's an example there on screen, that one shows there's two cycles. The one on the rock on the left, boulder, on the left is a ton, roughly a ton. The one on the right is a three-ton. They run $200 a ton. And the people, the engineers and everybody, you know, because they know what the dollar, we're trying, but we want to be effective. If you, you could go different routes, you can build the boulder on the left, you can get three or four of those, and space them out, not far, but you know, and you can, they're more decorative than boulders, you know. And they're more economical, but then they're more, and air function. You know, a car hits it, or a vehicle hits them, they'll whoop, but then we can put them back. If they hit a guardrail, we don't want them to guardrail, but we hit a boulder, you'll chances are you lean them over.
Lean over and the car will ram over the gas.
Well, the resident does have a field stone that lines, she was hoping that, I think, to deter vehicles from going in, but as we've seen, the cars won't go top of that, and they're little boulders. These, I don't know how far we're, where we want to go with all this, as far as cost, if we're going to turn this. This company is, it's, I have a quarry in Westville and Chesterton on 250 East. And I have a question, if we like this idea, want to go this route, however we want to do it, I can actually take the resident out with me, and we can pick rocks. Cause they have an section off there, she likes one more than the other, and they weigh on it, they'll weigh them off for us. They, delivery there is paid 85 bucks per hour, 250 dollars an hour, whatever. We would have to, they don't position them, they will deliver and dump.
So we have the capability?
Right, and we've got the backhoe would be able to move.
And dump truck. We have a dump truck that should.
Yeah, we can, well, yeah.
Yeah, I have a delivery right to their home, that would be easier, I think.
Yeah, just a thought, I'm just saying, they can deliver, we move it around, not be able to probably pick them up, but.
85 dollars to deliver whatever we need delivered, or per?
Per hour.
Per hour, okay.
So I don't even need to take two hours, but.
Right.
I'm just saying, as far as moving, I've already talked to Dave, discussed this whole thing. Backhoe, we have a backhoe and a skid steer, you know, we, the smaller one, I don't think they might be able to move it with the backhoe, but the little guy is able to, you know, roll it, move it around, get it in position.
So the smaller ones would be easier for our street department, or there's going to be? Ken, do you want to weigh in on this at all? You are the engineer.
I just, I love the TV. I like the boulder idea. For several reasons, one, doesn't have the gas lines, and very, Trilla, it's already, I said this on top of them, but try not to. I think the second best idea would be the bollards, but you know, no matter whether you use the bollards or the boulders, the spacing between them has to be such that the car can't go between them.
Correct.
So you have to make sure that they're only like eight feet apart. I do like the boulder idea.
Okay. Means that the smaller of the two would be easier for our street department to move?
Yeah, and I guess Dave's also.
So I think the next thing we need to find out is how many of those we need?
Yeah.
Definitive answer, how many?
Yeah, yeah. I'll use that, I have a question, clear that up, Laura, you talked to.
And can we, can we ask for a motion on a not to exceed cost this evening? So let's say we do four, $200 piece of 800 plus 85 for delivery.
1,000. Not to exceed 1,000.
I don't think that would be 1,000. Okay, so if someone would like to make a motion for Laura to proceed with this.
Like you said, if we found it, and essentially public comment, it's an app, so it's that kind of a little bit.
So here's the other thing, I know this is gonna go onto the town right of way, and if there is an issue where the same thing happens again, where a vehicle were to go off Yankee and potentially run into this person's house, and now we have these boulders here, what liability is that open the town up to?
Can never stop anybody. If a company can have liability, but we can rather buy a carrier as well, just to see if it is your right of way. So you do get to place in that liability. But I think that you're all right there. But if we are concerned, we can make it subject to making sure that review, see if there's any issue that we might have.
Okay. And so Pete?
I will make the motion to not exceed $1,000 on this project.
I second.
Subject to?
Yeah, let's amend the agenda as and...
Okay.
Yes.
So our motion?
That's my motion.
Amended the agenda to include the approval of the expenditure not to exceed $1,000 to purchase boulders to be placed in front of the home at Yankee and Waltons.
Karen, did you ask one question? The older lady is here tonight.
Correct.
Out of respect for her, should she be kinda...
Again?
...a little...
I'll give that to you.
Oh, yeah.
Because you're involved here to lead this project, so we'll defer back to you on that part, Warren.
I checked.
Oh. Retirement's good for you. So again, the amended, the motion stands to amend the agenda for approval of the purchase of the boulders, not to exceed $1,000.
Okay.
And Warren, you'll speak with the resident and make sure we cover our liability issues as well. Pete, thank you for the motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Laura. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any other council comments this evening?
Yep, I got one more. This is on my own. I'm sorry. There was a discussion about tax courts and repairing, and we had one, just call it a budget price that came through. I went a step further, and I was curious. They make a product that fills cracks. And they do. There's a company called Seal Master. They're over in Mariposa. I purchased a one-gallon of it. They do come in natural. They come in green. They're blue, maybe black. But just to throw this out, I would, I'd like to do it, because we don't know how much to get, how much to use. So I have this gallon that I would like me personally go and take care of some of the cracks on one quarter. And that'll kind of give me an idea of how much one gallon cover. And then we can go from there. It was $30 per that gallon, but, you know, they, and they, like I said, they have others. But I don't know anything more about what you got in your hand. And I did, I talked to Dave, and I am showing the product that just came in. I kind of have to see what we can best on things.
So do you like to grind down corners or any other surface on the corner?
No, what has, what would happen, because the, what's happening is the cracks are blistering. And so you take, you would have to take it out scraper and use the scraper towel to get it as smooth as you can. Apply this material. It's heavy. It's kind of like the drywall mud consistency. So then you smear it on and let it dry. It takes about 24, 48 hours to cure. And, but as far as preparation work, yeah, there's, you're gonna have to clean the cracks out. You gotta buy a wall mount. You gotta scrape it out. So, you know, I'd just like to do what I can with one gallon, but better tell you guys in a...
So are you looking for our approval to do that this evening?
Uh.
Are you looking for our approval to do that this evening?
I am.
So again, we have to amend the agenda again.
As far as opinion, it's formal motion. There's no objection. I have no objection using this time process.
You're okay.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you for letting us know. Any other council comments this evening? I know. You're going back to the first town.
I know. I can only have one word regarding the agenda. I forgot that over a dozen of our residents have asked for June 8th to have a community garage sale. So it would just be like a normal garage sale. We're just going to advertise for it on Facebook. And I said I would let these residents know. So it would just be like any resident having the garage sale. Just they still come in and pay the $5, but we would just be advertising that Trail Creek is...
So it would be similar to what they do in other neighborhoods like Village Green or John Pike Park, where it would be one day where everyone has a community garage sale day?
Yes.
I don't think we need a formal motion for that either.
I mean, I like the idea that just, you know, you're gonna have cheaters that aren't gonna come in and spray this or what.
I think we have that in place anyway. Do you have to approach the podium for me in that return?
That's money, but the garage sale, actually, we had that conversation about this. This is an event that we were talking about constantly doing in our park later this fall. So I, it's been the fall past kind of thing.
So I think you could do what's still at the park later this fall and just have people come out as vendors. But this could be a separate event where people just did a community-wide garage sale day.
But can they, I'm guessing, self-invested in conjunction with that, can they, does it have to be at, can it be anywhere large, so would anybody could have it at their house, they would just walk up to it? So that's what it would be, if it were, communities would be, it's not very small, it's a home, and it just, they would come.
I think we talked about this most days.
In our post, that was a quick post for the community, we would say you still need to come in right during your garage sale, so.
So...
So we could accumulate a list or...
So June 8th, so do we have any opposition to that?
No.
Here comes some Marshall.
So the biggest concern to me was gonna be the parking. When we have garage sales just here and there throughout, it's a nightmare because people park in the street. Having other, or other people having garage sales in either of the communities coming in, it's gonna be, I mean, counting, it's very difficult to place because you leave here over here while they fill back up on their front lawn.
So if you could work with Crystal on that post, so that we have the wording correct for...
That your post is gonna do this.
For parking, we're gonna have to remind people as we go forward through the town. But as much as we can, at least get it on there so that we...
Of course, we're having a job thing, because they overflow. It's insane.
They, also, this is a very short period of time. I don't know how many we really will work out. I can't imagine having as much as John Pike Park and...
It's when you advertise it, that's when they come. They don't want you to leave there.
Okay.
So.
Well, we'll see how this goes this first year, and if it doesn't work, then we know what to change for next year. Okay. All right, and with that?
I just have one more thing. So we've talked in the past about how dissemination of information to the residents of Trail Creek has been kind of an issue for us, not only on Facebook, but on any other venue.
Next door.
And I know that we've talked, or you've mentioned, Crystal's mentioned. Is, do we have access to some type of a paging system that people in the Trail Creek can subscribe to, that we can disseminate information to their smartphone to?
We currently don't, but Laura was looking into for them, and that would give us this...
And they would have to send them?
Right, right, right.
Yeah, yep. And it'd be just like any other site. You would say what type of things you were interested in, your department, you know, like police reports or sales or whatever. And then we'd click that, and then it would just go on.
I just think ultimately, that's probably the best way for us to get information out.
Oh, I...
So, and...
It is, except for the residents who don't have a smartphone or don't sign up for the service or...
That's when snail mail is still...
There are some that don't have access to those things and don't, you know, don't use social media or don't use the internet, so to speak. So, so in that regard, mail is still the best, but I think in this short time period, we'll have to use social media for this one.
For this one.
And that we'll look forward on there.
Does, where do we not communicate, it was, it can use a phone call to?
Yeah.
To act for a while?
Well, that's what I would like to get, is something like, the Michigan City schools have something that you can sign up for. If there's a two-hour delay, you get a phone call.
Get an alert.
No, you get a actual phone call at the office.
That's right.
And if you answer, you get a recall, but if you don't answer, you get the reminder.
Right.
And that would be for someone who doesn't have a smartphone. And that's, that's what, no company that I've found. But they said maybe in your software on your phone, you could find something like that.
Okay.
Or you would make a recall and you would push out.
So those are things that we can look into?
Yeah, yep.
Any other comments from the council this evening? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion?
I'm going to adjourn.
Sure.
I second it.
Aye.
Thank you, Pete. Laura, all in favor?
Aye.
Your opinion is officially adjourned.